Okay, good evening, everyone. It is 6:00 PM, July 21st, 2025, and it's time to call the city council meeting to order. Ms. Jones, roll call, please.
Mr. Austin?
Present.
Mr. Shuck?
Here.
Ms. McGinnis?
Here.
Ms. Nally?
Here.
Ms. Price?
Here.
Mr. Pry?
Here.
Mr. Taylor?
Here.
Mayor, you have a question.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Reese?
Invite you to join me as we pray. Our Father, we come before you this evening, and we thank you for the privilege of being here tonight. I pray that you'd be with this meeting and the agenda that's before us. I pray that you would just give wisdom and discernment tonight for the decisions that may be made or things considered. Thank you for this council and just the representative form of government as they represent us with an eye to the future. Thank you for the work that they do. Thank you for all that's going on in our city. Continue to guide and protect us. It's in your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Invite you to stand with me for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. May be seated.
All right, thank you. Is there any announcements or public comments that's not on the agenda? Okay, hearing done, we will close that segment and go to the consent agenda.
Move to approve the meeting minutes from the July 7th city council meeting.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All of us in favor?
Aye.
Move to read new business by title only?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to read by title only. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. So, we have just one item, and it's a very important item, an update on our Flock system. City Attorney Lynn Gray and Police Chief Kirby Cochrane.
Thank you, Mayor. If we'll allow our guests to get situated here this morning, if it's okay with you, Chief, I'll kind of maybe give some background as to why it's being presented here tonight, if that's okay with you. Council members, thanks for listening. This is something that we're not asking you to take any action on tonight, but this is for informational purposes only, and I wanted to give you some background. As you know, the city frequently gets public records requests from citizens asking for information and documents and things. And particularly in this age with easy accessibility, we get numerous, numerous requests that are sent to us to ask for things. And several months ago, I got a public records request from a citizen wanting to get information regarding our Flock system, and I responded to that public records request and gave them the information that is available, such as the contracts that were entered into by the city. And then also did not provide all information regarding where the locations of our cameras are and such, because those types of things are protected and should not be disclosed. Subsequent to providing all that information, one of our council members, Councilman Nally, received an email wanting to know why the council had not approved the extension that was entered into with the Flock system, wanted to know what the Flock security system was all about, and wanted a lot of information. One of the beauties of Internet is that it provides easy access. One of the difficulties with the Internet is oftentimes the information is not accurate. And frankly, there were some problems with the email that was sent in terms of being misinformation that I felt that needed to be clarified. The first and foremost, I would say to you, is the Flock system. We are under contract with Flock for that security system. The reason that council doesn't sign on it is it's not a council, I say this respectfully, council decision. As you all know, you approve the budget and you do the funding, but the determination of entering into the contract is a board of works decision. And so, that was the first thing that I wanted to point out to the citizen that was making that request. More importantly, the Flock system is not a surveillance system where we keep and we spy on people and we maintain data and those types of things. It's actually a license plate reader system, and these gentlemen can give you more information. But rather than simply indicate that it was not a council decision, the thought occurred to me and to the mayor and to Councilwoman Nally that if she receives such a request, the potential is that maybe you, in your roles as elected official, might also get those requests, and I thought it, we thought it important to arm you with information just so that you have it, so that if someone asks you about it, you can say, well, it's not my decision, but here's what I know about it. The other thing, frankly, that I thought was a good thing for us is talking to the chief and talking to the mayor. It has been a great tool for our police department, and it has been very, very, very beneficial to law enforcement and the things that's happening. So, we decided with chief's direction that he would reach out to the public affairs individual with Flock to come in and describe the system for you, so that you all have that information, you know what it is, not asking you to take any action on it, but then you'll know what it is. So, Chief, did I accurately portray what brought us here this evening and maybe why some of the information provided will be directed into specific questions that we received?
Yes, absolutely. And without further ado, I'd like for Chris Tenal to come up and talk a little bit about it and introduce our speaker. Flock is unprecedentedly a tool that we use often, and we've recovered a lot of property with this tool. They can talk a little bit more about the technicalities of their subject matter experts. So, Chris.
Chris Tenal, Lieutenant with the Frank Police Department. Before we introduce Representative from Flock, I just want to say, I've been here 31 years, okay, 31 years. This Flock safety is the best tool that's come along in my 30 years. Nothing compares to it. So, we don't want to give that up. And to share with you a few success stories that we've had. Mr. Wood, Parish Drive, was robbed a few years back after he returned home from the casino. And Flock was used to track a vehicle that followed him from the casino back to Franklin. And within an hour's time, we knew who we were looking for, because once we have the information that we can obtain through Flock, we can then get the registered owner's photograph, we could put that in a photo array, we can show that to a victim, a victim can pick them out, now we have a positive ID, now we know who we're looking for. Beyond that case, we also had a robbery of our Phillips 66 here on East Jefferson Street that ended up changing in time. It came out as a robbery. They stated that they didn't have any vehicle evidence or any surveillance video that caught the suspect vehicle. Our detectives that are on the scene noticed a camera that they weren't showing. Once they got access to that camera, they got a suspect vehicle description, used Flock to identify a plate number. They were able to put that information out, and that vehicle got stopped in Chattanooga, Tennessee, headed south. But with that case, it's much greater than Franklin is aware, that that turned federal because it turns out that that was a scam, a hoax that's been ran multiple times across the United States in which individuals are reporting a robbery, and people are being prosecuted and held accountable for that in hopes to get citizenship. So, they actually hire someone, can rob their business. We know it's happened three times in Johnson County, and one of them was at our Phillips 66. So, those cases are being prosecuted, and the feds did pick that up. So, I reached out to our patrol division. There's endless stories about how Flock has helped the city of Franklin and helped to solve cases, but we use it daily. I mean, if it's, whether or not it's a person that's threatening their own life and we're trying to track them down to try to preserve a life, or we track them down and it's an end of life, we still use it for those purposes to find loved ones and to, over the weekend, stolen vehicle, stolen from Superior Auto down here, was recovered a day later, driving around Franklin, and it drove by a Flock camera. Our road officers knew it was in the area, and it turned out to be several blocks away, but once they located the vehicle and threw a little bit more investigation by the patrol division, they figured out, hey, this guy's father lives nearby. They go knock on the door, there he is. He's got the key to the car in his pants pocket. That car, as we sit here talking, is in our parking lot getting released tomorrow. But we do, we really do use this system every day, and it's a tool that we don't want to lose. But with that, I don't answer any more questions that you may have, but Cameron Simmons came from out of state. He flew in from Georgia, and he's leaving here to go to Boston. So, this is what he does. I'll leave it to the experts to answer your questions or explain it further.
Thanks, Cam.
Thank you. Welcome to Franklin.
Hi, folks. Thank you so much for having me. Chief and detective in particular, really appreciate the opportunity to tell you all a little bit about Flock. As the detective mentioned, we're headquartered in Atlanta, and if this sounds good for purposes of tonight, I'm happy just to start, you know, telling you a little bit about the company and the background, sort of why we do what we do, and then, you know, can carry that into sort of how this is used nationally, how the system works, and then, you know, we'll turn it over to any Q and A that you all have. And I know you've been getting some specific questions from residents as well. So, you know, happy to walk through anything that's helpful for you. Councilwoman Gray, I believe you mentioned this at the outset, you know, we too see a lot of just misinformation out there about Flock, and a lot of what are often really legitimate, you know, public concerns about public safety technology, how they're being used and why and for what purpose and who has access to data. So, by way of background, I don't know if I mentioned this already, I lead our government affairs practice at Flock, so I get the opportunity to travel to cities across the country and help mayors and city councils and chiefs fully realize their public safety priorities at Flock, and we offer a variety of products in addition to license plate readers. And so, believe really strongly that this stuff is best used, you know, in concert with really good accountability and robust public discussion. So, always excited when we get the opportunity to, you know, come have these discussions here. So, I'll start maybe. Flock Safety is headquartered in Atlanta. We're operating in over 6,000 communities across the United States today, so it's a very widely used law enforcement tool, and was founded really in the premise of our founders' personal experience in their own neighborhood where there's a break-in in his HOA, and he caught an image of the vehicle that they believed committed the crime. And when they turned that over to their law enforcement department, there wasn't actually anything that they could do with that evidence, which is very, very common at the time. Across the country today, and this is true also in Indiana, clearance rates in the United States, which is how often after a crime is committed and reported to police, does it actually result in an arrest, are abysmally low, much lower than we would, you know, want to see in the 21st century. So, for violent crime in Indiana in 2023, I believe it was just upwards of about 39% of all violent crime was solved, and just upwards of 53% of all homicides in the state. That's very common across the country, and it's most often because law enforcement lack the evidentiary resources that they need to do something about it when a crime occurs. So, Flock is dissolved pretty specifically to help solve that particular problem. So, what we'll do is we partner with cities, we also partner with the private sector. So, you know, churches or hospitals or schools can also purchase Flock technology and collaborate with their police departments using the system. And then we will go through and design a deployment plan where we'll help install fixed camera systems throughout the jurisdiction. I believe there's 13 of those in the city of Franklin. And then those are designed to capture still images of the back of vehicles when a vehicle passes the camera. So, it's not images of people, Councilwoman, to your earlier point, it's not mass surveillance. These are, you know, fixed cameras taking a still image of the back of a car on a public roadway when they're traveling on public streets. And then what that can do is end up being really incredibly valuable information to your law enforcement department when a crime does occur. So, they can use the Flock system in two ways, one of which is for investigatory purposes. So, when a crime occurs, they get a call from 911, they can actually query the Flock system to understand, you know, we're looking for this plate and see if it was at the scene at the time. Now, instead of having, you know, maybe you're looking for a white Honda with a bumper sticker, maybe you get a plate. If you're really lucky in law enforcement, they can actually follow an actionable lead that kind of helps them find that needle in the haystack, so to speak. And the second way they can use it is proactively. So, when the system is taking an image, what it's doing is comparing in real time the plate in question to outstanding databases like the Amber Alert Network, for example. So, Amber Alert, you know, goes off here in Indiana. If that suspect vehicle passes a Flock camera in one of the, you know, 250 or so jurisdictions that we're partnering with, law enforcement's going to get an alert that says, you know, that plate's in your jurisdiction, and then they can go through and make an arrest. So, I, just before coming here, was looking back through, you know, I'm at least personally aware of three or four different circumstances here in Indiana, two out of Indianapolis, one in Evansville, where Flock was used to quickly locate kidnapped children. Very often, it's the kind of thing where a mother, you know, has a kid in the car at a gas station, they go in, you know, to get gas, and then their vehicle's stolen with the child inside, and then being able to quickly recover missing kids. So, that's a really common use case for the system. Flock's been used to solve about 1,000 of those cases nationally, recovering missing victims, and then is also being used to say to solve just upwards of about 15% of all reported crime in the country. So, as the department's mentioned here, it's become a really, really critical tool for law enforcement investigations and response across the United States. And all of that said, also want to mention, and then, you know, we can get into as much of this as is helpful in Q and A, that we also believe that these systems work really well in concert with really good policy. So, we've also designed the system to be thinking about privacy from the ground up. Some of the ways that we have done that is first and foremost, customers institute a limited data retention policy. So, what happens when an image is taken on Flock is that image gets stored directly in the cloud, usually for 30 days on a rolling basis. And if that image is not associated with an active law enforcement investigation, it's hard purge from the system forever. So, it's deleted over a certain period of time. That helps preserve privacy. In addition to that, the system is fully auditable. So, anytime an officer is running a search on Flock, what happens is that you'll input a search reason or a case number associated with that search, and then that's preserved permanently in an audit trail forever that's available for oversight from council or from command staff, so that you can make sure that the system's being used for legitimate law enforcement purposes. So, we've actually built that feature into Flock from the ground up. And in addition to that, we believe really, really strongly that customers should own and control 100% of the data that's collected by the system. So, the way that this works at a high level is we at Flock maintain ownership over the actual hardware. So, we own the camera, and then we handle, you know, all the hard stuff, the installation and maintenance and, you know, repair and upgrades, and then your city and community maintains ownership over the data. So, only you control who has access to it, you control who you share it with. It's possible for Franklin County to example, for example, to share with Indianapolis PD if they choose to do so, and then the two agencies can collaborate with each other to solve crime. We don't sell it, we don't market it to, you know, for commercial purposes, it's strictly for law enforcement, and that's your data that's enshrined in our contracts as well. So, those are just a few of the things that we think about around, just like good ethical and transparent license plate reader deployment. So, I said a lot of things. I'll maybe pause there for any thoughts, questions, or reactions, you know, please consider us a resource, you know, happy to do anything that we can both now, today, and in follow-up, you know, if you have more questions after this, I'll help you understand the system or answer any questions that you all get from the public as well. Thanks for the time.
One of the things that I found, and I'm, since you actually go from community to community, I've got a feeling there's a large national network of misinformation that requests these things. So, these aren't new questions, obviously you've been asked, but one of the things that I've found to be a bit misleading is if we're maintaining some video of people and things like that, we're actually with the license plate reader accessing other databases, public records that are out there as opposed to creating some file on people with their private information. Is that not true?
That's exactly right. So, you know, what's collected by and stored in Flock's license plate recognition system are, you'll hear me use the term LPR for short, license plate reader, I may have already done that here tonight, is it's just still images collected on public roads. So, that's the only data of vehicles that makes for more objective evidence for law enforcement. That helps, you know, reduce a little bit of bias as well in witness reporting or in policing, and that's the data that's being stored and collected by the system. It is not tied to or accessible by any other law enforcement databases out there. The only folks that can access that, the data that's collected or those images are your police department and then other law enforcement agencies that they choose to share that information with if they do choose to do so. So, the only databases, you know, the way that there is a connection to databases and how this works is things like the Amber Alert Network. So, it's not like that data's stored in the Amber Alert system. We actually just have an integration directly with the National Center for Missing and Exploited Children at Flock, and so we're comparing against those databases in real time. Otherwise, that data's just stored in the Amazon Web Cloud.
Thank you.
Sir, can you give me any other systems that are similar to Flock nationally that you part, not, I shouldn't say partner with, but that has worked in conjunction with each other? Flock's not the only single system in the United States, correct?
That's right. There are, you know, today-
Who's your competitor, and do you guys talk to each other?
Yeah, great question. So, the Flock's now the largest provider of license plate readers in the country. So, about 6,000 communities nationwide. The second largest provider of this technology is Motorola Solutions, which, you know, in addition to, I remember them for, you know, flip phones back in the day, but they've got, you know, provide most of the radio systems to law enforcement across the country, body worn cameras as well. So, they also have a system. We're about twice as large of a network as Motorola's is today. And then there's a few other smaller providers, you know, of these systems sort of regionally who will also build their own networks. We don't today, to your question about, you know, do we talk to each other or does the system, do the systems, you know, speak with one another as well? Everything that is collected on Flock today is accessible only within Flock, so it's a secure database. Other competitors and other companies don't have access to that information, just your law enforcement department.
Kirby, I assume our law enforcement department reaches out to other systems specifically, right, for a license plate number out of Delaware, you know, Jeep, white, you know, if you've got that license plate number in a Flock system, but maybe they don't have a Flock system in Delaware, that's the other one.
I think we spoke briefly about it. There is a shared system within Flock, and yes, we, I think I mentioned earlier, I mean, Flock's from east coast to west coast, north and south.
But not, not the Flock. I understand that inside Flock.
You're talking about somebody outside of Flock?
Yes. He just said that they don't share, they do not share the information. Okay.
Just curious.
Yeah, and where you can, you know, like where officers will often get information like that, is we also integrate with, you know, National Justice, let me see if I'm about the NCIC, National Center for, do you know the shorthand for NCIC offhand?
NCIC?
Yeah. Crime Information Center. Thank you. I'm having, that's, that's my brain wary from travel on you right there. National Crime Information Center is a national database that the federal government uses that, you know, has things, for example, like outstanding warrants and plate files. And so, law enforcement quite broadly have access to that information as well. And then, you know, what can often happen, that's another thing that's possible with Flock, is if there's a suspect wanted for a, you know, triple homicide in the state of Illinois, there's an NCIC file out for that suspect, same thing. If that suspect passes a Flock camera in Franklin, Indiana, your PD will get an alert on that as well. So, that's another way that we sort of help law enforcement share information.
And the nice thing, because I think that clarifies what is the common misconception that I get, is it is a tool that is used to access already existing databases, but more importantly, to coordinate them. So, you're accessing either BMV records or Amber Alerts or FBI records or NCIS, and it gives the, our police department that ability to immediately know that they can access already publicly available, well, already collected information that we aren't storing it here to maintain surveillance on anyone. We're using it as a tool and accessing that already available equipment for information.
When you go by, say, somebody goes by a two-lane road, there's two cars beside each other, does it get both plates? Is that how that works?
Good question. What we typically do, so we'll, we have a couple of different cameras at Flock, some of which are designed pretty specifically for like a, you know, two or four-lane highway. You're typically getting two lanes of coverage with Flock, and then we'll partner with, you know, for example, Indot and go, you know, secure a permit to either attach that to infrastructure, place that on a pole, and then we've got a team of engineers who are going to, you know, get that angle just right to get coverage. So, you're looking at typically two lanes, some cameras we can do four.
Is it also my understanding, sir, that you're not just limited to law enforcement or public entities, you have also homeowners associations that have invested in it so that they know who's coming in and out, I mean, the vehicle identifications of people who come in and out of the homeowners association, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am. That's exactly right. So, in addition to partnering with police departments, we work with really any private sector entity with a vested interest in public safety. You know, we know that it takes everybody working together to make an impact on crime, and so we'll partner with HOAs. We work with most of the major retailers across the country, so, you know, think the Lowe's and Home Depots of the world, you know, Houses of Worship across the US, and then they can also buy a Flock camera, put that at the perimeter of their property, and if they choose to do so, they can share that data with their law enforcement department as well. So, if there's an HOA here in Franklin, they can decide to share that information with the police department, and if, say, a, you know, wanted robbery suspect passes that Flock camera in an HOA, your police department can get alerted off of that camera as well.
I had a question. So, it's license plate driven, so let's just say if there's a white Honda Civic, right, can you hone in on the white Honda Civic? Because criminals change plates, right?
Yeah, absolutely.
So, what, can you, can you detect the model and maker?
Yes, great question. So, you can on Flock also query by what we call our vehicle fingerprint. So, it's picking up make and model of the vehicle, plate, sometimes you get a partial plate, you know, with the system, and then we have a series of what we call sort of unique vehicle identifiers. So, you know, it could be that white Honda with a roof rack, that's typically, you know, the example that I'll tend to use. And so, it can be really, really helpful for your department when most often, if a serious crime occurs, you know, a witness most often isn't getting a plate, which is typically like the golden piece of information for law enforcement when they're working an investigation. And so, they can also query by those vehicle characteristics as well, find images of those, you know, white Honda that was around the scene at approximately this time, and then now, instead of, you know, having no lead, maybe you have two vehicles that you can actually follow through with to see if, you know, you can make something actionable out of that investigation.
And I think that's, that's a key point that you ask it. It's a lead, it's not necessarily, it doesn't mean everybody that has a white Honda is getting arrested.
Yeah, if it's just license plate driven, then it could be, yeah.
That's correct. And it's just, it's, that's why we call it a tool rather than, it's one additional item that they could then utilize to follow up on that.
On leads, yeah.
So, if the wrong person's driving or a different person's driving than the suspect, of course, we wouldn't just arrest because you have a white Honda.
Yeah. I had one more question. It might be more Kirby or Chief Cochrane related, but so if, if you pick up that Flock, if you get an alert and it's in this area, do you have to have another reason to pull them over, or is that sufficient to just pull them over based on the Flock?
Chris is nodding his head back there.
Okay, sorry, I just went, I mean, just for liability purposes, I was just wondering what, what that looked like.
With Flock, you're going to get suspended drivers, you're going to get a wanted person. So, and Flock's very good about reminding officers on a regular basis. If you get one of those hits, you need to look, take, investigate further. You need to take a look, does the description match the male that's driving? You're looking for a wanted male, and it's a female driving, you don't stop that vehicle.
Okay.
So, it's not just-
I just thought for liability purposes, yeah, okay.
So, and I will say that while I'm impressed with Flock is from the beginning, whenever they started building this and whenever they brought it to Franklin and it showed up, is they communicate with us on a regular basis. They've gotten, they've had so many more improvements and changed things within their own software based on law enforcement, and they have a quarterly forum that we go to, whether it's held somewhere in central Indiana, and they're constantly improving it, and they teach you. They don't just sell you the product and not communicate with you. So, it's a pretty good company. They get, have a good relationship with most, with all the law enforcement. But I wanted to say that just for Franklin alone, we have 2,004 networks that we have been given, granted information, the ability to look at those cameras, 2,004. And that's not cameras, that's networks. So, if that network has 20 cameras, or one of them has 50, or one of them has one, we get to access all those police agencies' cameras. Soon as I enter a plate, it's checking theirs also. In Franklin, Compass Park has eight, Lowe's has three, and InGroup has two. So, that's, that's the ones in our community that's already purchased, and they all share with us. And to reiterate, they don't get to see that there's a suspended driver. We do.
Okay, I was going to ask if they saw our cameras as well.
Yeah, I should have emphasized that. As things go, private sector customers can choose to share their information with law enforcement, but not vice versa. So, only sworn law enforcement officers have access to city and public data.
And that was one of the questions that the, sometimes the people wanting public records requests, demand of me to identify the locations of those, and we do- records requests, demand of me to identify the locations of those, and we do not tell them where those are, that the cameras are.
I have a couple of questions.
Nor are we required to tell them.
One, have you been sued? And I'm sure you have. And how did that turn out? And, let's just go with that one.
Yes, certainly. You know, we have had a couple of lawsuits at Flock, but, you know, it'll be over things, like we've had a couple of, like, employee-related, you know, lawsuits, like any company. Nothing on the docket, like, major, like you would be, you know, thinking about. We really haven't had much in the way of, you know, significant legal trouble with the system.
Okay, and I guess the other part of that question, was there some kind of legislation to, to allow this to happen?
Yeah, great question. Roughly 22 or so, maybe it's just slightly less than that. States across the country have regulated license plate readers in some way. We at Flock, you know, do a lot of work around advocating for good public policy around this, in large part because we think that this stuff works well in concert with just good, you know, public trust and transparency and accountability mechanisms. So, all the stuff we've talked about tonight, you know, auditability and control over data to make sure vendors aren't selling, you know, this information for commercial purposes, limited data retention, these are all good things. That, it's one thing for, you know, me, a representative from Flock, to come and, you know, talk to us about our company's practices, but it's another for the public, I think, too, to see that enshrined in, you know, state law. And so, very often, states will take steps to authorize license plate reader use, and then, will enshrine, you know, a lot of the things that we've talked about, you know, you'll like to see in a typical license plate reader law as well. And then, there's a number of states where this is unregulated, you know, today. So, we sort of have our own policies in place, and then, of course, local ordinances, you know, govern how it works as well. I don't believe there's a law on the books in Indiana, if I'm not mistaken.
License plate readers are allowed, and there is no right of, expectation of privacy on public roads and/or in public places. So, it is a permissible use.
Yeah, that's right. And that's, you know, pretty well upheld legal precedent across the country, so it's been examined by courts, you know, a number of times, upwards of 20.
And I'm just assuming, when you said you work with Indot, that there's some kind of Indiana regulation there with Indot to allow that?
There absolutely is, yeah. And, you know, typically also governs things like highway, and safety, and crash worthiness, you know, so we work with DOTs across the country. It's the kind of thing where, you know, you make sure if a driver, you know, does hit a pole, it's not gonna injure somebody, and, you know, there's standards that go into all that as well.
Sir, I got more of a comment, more than a question, but I would think the FOP here in the state of Indiana would be putting out a lot of legislation to have a front license plate and a rear license plate, because I would assume, and I'm just guessing, that your succession rate for apprehensions, having a, showing the driver of the vehicle from the front photograph with the license plate, and the person driving the vehicle, would be more beneficial than just the rear plate.
I don't actually know offhand, and maybe let me ask, are front plates legal in Indiana?
They're not required.
Okay. I will say, I do see it from law enforcement all over the country, you know, you're 100% right, most want to see a, you know, front plate. And for us, it's not something, you know, we train our cameras pretty specifically on the back of a vehicle. Part of that is a privacy, you know, mechanism, and because it's an objective piece of evidence to be looking at a vehicle, but to the detective's point earlier, an officer doesn't always know, you know, who's driving the vehicle. And so, you're typically looking for that car, and goes to, you know, Council, when you're a point, it's all just a lead, you know, it gives you one piece of information as part of a investigation.
But when you got a person's face in a picture with the license plate and a match for the car, that's pretty concrete.
Yep.
Versus a rear, rear photograph of the license plate. Just my opinion. I've got a photograph of me doing 120 in Germany on the Autobahn, breaking the law, right? But, and a picture of me going-
We have no jurisdiction over that.
You know, but I, I'm just saying, obviously not. But, but, you know, and you get it in the mail, right? And there's a picture of your face and your car, your license plate, you know, it's, there's, it's guilty, so.
Yeah. No question, you know, for what it's worth, we do at Flock also offer, we have a live video camera, you know, solution, that cities will use for sort of that, you know, same purpose. So, you can put up a few live video and a few license plate readers, and depending on the city, you know, we'll sort of offer a, a product for that as well.
Interesting. Thank you. Just more of a comment.
Chief Cochrane? We have 13 cameras right now. Did we start with 13, or have we added?
No, we added. And to be honest with you, we kind of coordinate that with the, with the share, and the surrounding agencies that might also purchase them. It kind of keeps taxpayer costs down for everyone, and we strategically work to place them in locations that we can all work together and just be transparent. And, you know, we're not duplicating cameras in a, you know, one square mile area. And then, if I can, real quick, I hope I answered that question. If you could talk briefly, and then, maybe somebody's gonna ask this question. I know it was brought up, it's been brought up before, and I get phone calls, huh? Talk a little bit about, Chris, you shared some data with me earlier. As administrators, we can see who's accessing the cameras, what they're accessing it for. Can you talk about that a little bit? Because that's one of the questions I believe in the-
It was. It was one of the questions. They were wanting to know if, like, another employee could misuse the product, or any kind of way have, you know, if you have ill feelings towards one of your other neighbors or something, if you could, you know, in any kind of way misabuse it.
Right. Yeah, absolutely. It's something we think a lot about at Flock. And so, have designed the system specifically to make sure that every time the system's accessed, there's a search record that's associated with that. So, you know, by our own policy at Flock, only sworn law enforcement officers from Franklin can access the system. And then, the administrator at the department actually controls, you know, which officers can and cannot use it at a baseline. So, they've got control over that from the command staff level. And then, built into the actual product itself is inherent auditability. So, you know, it's not like you can just go on Flock and, you know, run searches. When you actually access the system, there's a field in order to run a search that requires a case number or a specific search reason, so you'll have to type, you know, missing person, or add a case. And then, that document is preserved as a record permanently. So, that's available for oversight by the chief, or by command staff. You know, some cities, that'll include the mayor, or they'll release that to the public, you know, sort of depending on the comfort level, and, you know, balancing that against, like, preserving records of active investigations. But that record does exist, so there's an accountability mechanism to make sure that, you know, every search is for a legitimate law enforcement purpose.
And if we ever had unauthorized use of any of our, because we, other databases in the police department, that's all subject to discipline action under our SOPs as well, the merit board.
You mentioned Transparency Portal.
Yeah, happy to, yes. A couple of other things that, you know, extent to which the department and, you know, council are interested in it, is we also try to do what we can to help make sure that we're equipping departments with transparency features that make it easy for the public to sort of see how and why these things are being used. And so, very often, that starts, your department can actually adopt and set a license plate reader policy. If I'm not mistaken, Chief, I believe you're working through policy for the department, you know, broadly. There's sort of standard policies that you can use that help govern things like we were talking about earlier, making sure that an officer, when they receive an alert on Flock, is, you know, checking the plate against NCIC, for example, to make sure they've got the right vehicle. That helps prevent against things, you know, like misreads, for example. We have a very, very high accuracy rate at Flock, but it is technology, you know, nothing's ever perfect, so there's some, you know, standard operating procedures like that, that can be often very useful for departments. And then, in addition to that, we offer customers a free, what we call Transparency Portal. So, it's a customizable, just public-facing website, that will say, you know, how many cameras you have, you can post your license plate reader policy on that website for the public to see, you can share success stories when your department has them, so if they were used, you know, in a serious crime of public interest, they can post that. And then, we'll also tell you things like what other law enforcement agencies you're sharing data with. So, it can show you, you know, other agencies in Indiana that you're collaborating with publicly, all of which are customizable and free, pretty turnkey for the agency. So, you know, of course, deferring to, you know, the chief and the department, something that if was of interest to Franklin, we could also turn on here locally as well.
And, and not to get too far in the woods, weeds, those would be, policies are typically approved by the Board of Works. Again, respectfully, but that's typically the kind of things. Or, the department heads within the, the department themselves make those kinds of decisions. That's part of being a department head, so.
Questions I have are really more technical. You know, some of you are answering on there, you know, using AWS there. Of course, I assume that you're using all the available, you know, regions and availability zone within, you know, the US, so that everybody's accessing that zone that's closest to them, be able to access that data the fastest, everything?
Yes, sir.
In that, too, in your system, if, can any officer be able to go in there and delete anything in there, or is it, you know, kind of a read-only type, you know, scenario there?
I believe today, and I actually would be interested in double checking on this to make sure, that everything is read-only, and then, in accordance with your city's retention policy. So, if you have a 30-day retention schedule, which I believe you probably do have in place, if I had to guess.
They do.
The deletion's gonna occur at, you know, if that image is taken at 12:59 PM on the rolling basis, that image will be deleted, unless your law enforcement department takes specific action to download it as part of an investigation. I actually don't believe that officers can go in and delete data from the system, but I would need to triple confirm that to be positive.
Going along with that whole retention policy there, you know, of course, you're, I'm assuming, you know, your systems are being backed up, being AWS like they are, is when you're doing those kind of backups, one, the system backups are probably separate from the data backups, I would kind of probably assume there. In that, though, two, are you doing any kind of immutability backups where, you know, for those that don't know what immutability means, it means, you know, once data's written, it is there, you can't touch it, you know, I mean, you can't modify it, delete it, or anything until a certain retention time there. So, in that, our 30 days retention policy of that stuff, if somebody actually, or a system was crashed or something, you can go back, so that, whatever that retention policy, you pull it back, and then, you know, if we cover all that there.
Yes, sir. I believe that's right. So, what happens today is it's basically stored for a limited amount of time on the edge, you know, on the device. It's encrypted at the time that that's collected at rest, and then, also in transit to AWS. And then, you know, we have a series of sort of like best practices, like, you know, NIST standards that we follow for purposes of, you know, cyber hygiene as well. So, yeah, I, as you're describing it, is how I understand the system as well.
And then, you go into my next question, it was about compliance or regulatory, you know, things you have to process, you mentioned this there.
Yep.
Good to hear that and everything, so.
Yeah, that's right. SOC 2 Type 2, ISO 27001. I get the sense you're, got a technical background.
I'm a technical guy, that's what I do.
Yep. Yeah, absolutely.
Can you speak English?
All right, I'm good.
So, the possibilities of the system being hacked is slim to none, right?
It's slim, yeah. And we have never had a hack at Flock. We've been around, you know, eight years now, and are, of course, at this point, the largest provider of license plate recognition. Of course, it's not impossible, you know, no system's invulnerable, but we take every step possible to make sure that we're securing the system, just as we've described.
Yeah, thank you.
So, yeah, just a question for Chief, and I could ask this anytime. We just had a bad accident up on US 31 a couple weeks ago, and we know that vehicle was coming from north. Did they cross any Flock cameras anywhere?
Not in Franklin. So, it was further up in Indianapolis where they passed the Flock camera.
Did they pat?
Business cameras.
Okay.
Documenting that. At Rascal's Fun Zone, and there's some type of region next to Taco Bell and White Line, and then, our own police department cameras. And that puts them, by obtaining that information, puts them at 102 miles per hour coming south. Running red lights.
Mm-hmm.
That might be what prompted that question, because I did pretty, uh-
Yeah, that, that is what?
...track speed from point A to point, impact.
Because you have fixed point to fixed point.
Correct.
Now, to, to me on that, it is gonna-
Hey, can you get to the mine?
Can you get, so that Jan can pick it up? That's right.
There, we're in the process, Flock is in the process of moving a few cameras, because they have to move them out of the construction zone on US 31. So, two of them that's in the construction zone are being moved to south city limits, catching northbound, southbound, and then, two is going just north of Noelwood, catching southbound and catching northbound. And everything in between's gonna be gone. But, that, that's gonna serve us good, and we want to catch people coming and going from Franklin, if they've committed crimes, escaping, that helps us. And if they're coming into town and they're wanted or a dangerous person, we're gonna know that also. So, we try to, like Chief said, we try to move them. You asked how many cameras? We have 13 plus one. The plus one is gonna be a Falcon Flex. They've got names for all the cameras, he's been just calling them LPRs. But, the Falcons are the ones that's fixed on the poles, 13 of those. The Flex, we can move it. So, we have a high crime area, we, like, we had a burglary on Jefferson Street last week, we put one out there and a couple of other cameras, and that one's all juvenile locked up, and gonna be gone for a little bit. But, that, that camera, upon anyone requesting, we'll put it anywhere. So, Flock's got a lot of other tools that they've got, that they're not pushing on Franklin. They can detect gunshots, they have drones that'll go take police reports, they'll launch, go hover over a fire, and, we're not there yet. We don't, we're not big enough, we don't need that. Sorry. Cost too much.
There you go. I like that, Chris.
Thank you.
All right.
Any other good questions? I think it's been good conversation. Thank you, Irene.
It has, really has. Thank you.
I really appreciate you flying in.
Yeah. Well, I'm very happy to do it, so thanks for having me. And of course, you know, if y'all have any other questions you think of, you know, I'm happy to be a resource to you, and you have a beautiful town, so I appreciate y'all.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Okay.
So, with that, Mayor, again, we're not asking for any action on your part, just wanted to arm you with information, should any of your constituents ask you in the future. So, thank you for your patience.
And I think all of us up here, public safety is our number one priority. That's what we get elected for, is public safety, and people put their faith in us, and this is a tool that I firmly believe in, so that's my opinion. Okay, we don't have any other business, so we'll go into council member comments, and I'll start with Jennifer.
Sure. First of all, thank you for all the information that you provided tonight. And then, just a kind of an update, Todd and I are on the opioid task force for Johnson County. We had a meeting a week and a half ago?
We did.
To listen, or to kind of talk over the grants that had been submitted, and the public hearing is Wednesday at 10:00 AM at the Commissioner's Office, for the presentations to be heard, and then, we'll make decisions on dispersing or granting that monies.
How much do you have this time to, to give to grants?
Uh, not-
It's a rather large number.
Yeah, well, we have-
There's a lot of money in the pot.
That's what I thought there was.
Um, yeah, so we're not gonna disperse all of it. There's, yeah.
That's because you request for about-
I've also talked about putting some of them maybe in some CDs, laddering, laddering some CDs, and may, like, earning some money on some of the funds.
Yeah.
But, no, no specific amount. I think we have five? I've also talked about, um, putting some of them maybe in some CDs, laddering, laddering some CDs and, um, may, like, earning some money on some of the funds.
Yeah.
But, no, no specific amount. Uh, I think we have five.
Four, four or five applicants.
Four or five applications, um, this, this time. And some of them are repeat, um, but there was one or two new ones. I don't have all that, I don't have my folder for that, but just an update for that, that process. And so, just to recap, we had wanted to get money out last year, right? Um, and so, we did that, um, grant presentation and, and awarding those grants in December, just so we could get that. So, from here, it's gonna kind of like, uh, be staggered, but from here on out, it'll be yearly at this time of year. Um, so.
And the Board of Works' last meeting approved, not the meeting prior to this, but last meeting approved another restricted fund settlement, uh, for another distributor. So, it's gonna continue to grow, so.
For, for many years.
Mm-hmm. Yes, at least the next 20. Yes.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you. I just wanna piggyback off of what Jennifer said. Thank you for coming in and explaining the Flock camera system to us. It was greatly, uh, there was a lot of good information there that I hope that we can share with our community and let them know that, you know, it's only for our safety. And it's a plate reader, and, you know, our, our community needs to know that. Because I think that they hear so much negativity from maybe one or two, that kind of kills the whole team, you know. So, yeah, thank you so much, because that was really good information. Greatly appreciated.
Nothing tonight, sir? Sean?
Nothing tonight, sir.
Ken?
I don't have anything. Thank you for coming, though, sir. Appreciate it.
Ann?
Nothing further, thanks.
Josh?
Yeah, nothing tonight.
Okay. Tara, anything? Dan? Lynn?
No, sir.
And I have nothing, but thank you for coming to Franklin, Indiana.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. All those in favor? Aye.